All right. Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Township of Georgia Bay on Wednesday morning, August thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, and I'd like to call the special committee of the whole meeting to order at nine A.M. In the spirit of reconciliation, we wish to acknowledge the enduring relationship between indigenous peoples and the territories they have traditionally occupied. We recognize and deeply appreciate the historic connection they have to this place, the land, the water, the sky, and all that live on in and above it. We are grateful for the opportunity to meet here, and we thank all the generations of indigenous peoples who have taken care of this place and who continue to care for it, and we want to show our respect. Hundreds of years after the first treaties were signed, they remain relevant today. May they guide our decisions and our actions. We commit to learn, to educate, to honor sacred places, and to take action towards real truth and reconciliation. Megwich. Counsel, any declarations of pecuniary interest or conflict of interest with regards to today's agenda? With that, new business. Counselor Cooper, we've been working through your process improvements list with some I don't think we need to be reintroduced to the whole thing, but we have a few topics still to discuss, discover, whatever the right word is, and I'm just wondering if you have any preference as to which one we start with today. Counselor Hayes.
There we go. Just wanted to get my sound on. Did you have to say something, Mayor?
Well, no, I thought Counselor Hazleton had his hand up, but I don't know if he's just waving.
I was going to ask, does it make any sense for us to just do a checkpoint on progress of the actions that have been agreed on for some of the already existing items to see if we're making any progress on the actions that we had agreed on?
I'm open either way, whether we have Counselor Cooper's pick a topic for us to continue on, or if we want a progress report. I mean, that was, that, part of that was in the file that was offered to us on the agenda, I believe.
Could I suggest, Mayor?
Certainly, that's why I first handed it over to you.
Well, I'll listen to what Counselor Hazleton has to say on occasion, but I would suggest, exactly, I, I would suggest that we sort of decide on the subject matter for today, and maybe at the end of them, I think, two, I'm thinking we'd cover two points, and then maybe have a bit of an update from our C.A.O. as to any progress that we've made on, where we've made decisions already, if that suits everybody. That way, we can start moving forward while we're fresh, and, and when we're less fresh, we can listen. Is that okay?
Yes, and through you, Mayor, I know myself, I haven't agreed to anything, and I certainly would like to hear all the topics that are on the list and be able to understand them better.
Well, I do not want to revisit the things that have already been discussed.
Right.
Since in the prior meetings.
Sure.
I would like to get it, personally, I'd like to get us through this list, get this, this assignment accomplished eventually, in its entirety. And so, to me, I, I'm quite open to the idea of talking about a couple items on this, and then an overview at the end of the meeting as to where we are or are not, and then if we're going to have another meeting. So, Counselor Cooper?
Yes. My suggestion, Mayor?
Yes.
Is that we deal with, we've done one through six, so I'm going to suggest we do seven, just follow through the, with the list, so item seven and eight.
All right.
If that's okay with you, and do you want me to kick it off, or?
Yes, I do. Item seven, let's go.
Just as an opening comment, you read, or gave the land acknowledgement state, statement, and I think it covered off something we're doing here today, which is to learn and educate. That's what we're trying to do with some of these matters here, are related to learning and education, so I just think we're, we're, you've already brought it up this morning, so I think that's great. In terms, in terms of item seven, I think there's a couple of points I'd like to make, and that is that there's really two aspects to number seven. One is sort of interpretations of planning rulings and so on, and I think we've learned a few things along the way. You may recall, there was a, a sort of opinion that came out from Galings, the law firm, about what they called the Galings Trilogy, and it was sort of a marketing piece, and it, it really, I think, A, was interesting, but overstated what all this meant, and one of the things I think we found out with, from that, was that, you know, Galings won on a couple of occasions where it was very specific municipal bylaws were in place, but the Township of Georgia Bay, to the best of my knowledge, did not have the same type of bylaws that were related to the case of Galings, so I think we have to be careful, all of us, whether it's counselors, staff, you name it. None of us are, A, lawyers, that I'm aware of, and B, even if we are, some of the interpretations need to be very carefully considered, so when we do use case law, like Galings Trilogy, when it's really not applicable in our case, I think we need to remember to learn from that. So that's sort of my opening comment, but in terms of what really is going on here in, in item seven, is to have our council give some consideration to the kind of information we have to digest when we are at Planning Council or we're at the Committee of Adjustment, and I think we need to give some consideration to the fact that we've been spending massive amounts of money on legal bills because we end up with the O.L.T., and I think that what we need to think about, and maybe find a way to do this, is to suggest to our Planning Department, and that, you know, if we continue down the current practice and road, we're going to be in more deep, you-know-what, if we're not careful with just on legal spending, but also, I have to say that if we get recommendations from planning staff to approve something, I'm starting, I'm starting to wonder, why do we have a Committee of Adjustment or a Planning Council? Basically, the decision-making body is being undercut, in a sense, because the O.L.T. supports whatever the planning staff have recommended, so I'm going to suggest, if we don't want to neuter these organizations, that we give some consideration to having our planning staff provide us options and, and supporting documentation around approve, reject, defer, deny, as opposed to saying, this is what we're suggesting, that you approve it. And I have difficulty with that, and I have difficulty sitting on a Planning Council where I know that my work is going to be basically neutered. So I, I start that off, I know it's contentious, but it's, it's the reality that we're dealing with today, and I think we need to give that some thought. Over to whomever else, thank you.
It looks like we're all dumbfounded. Counselor Bocheck.
Yes, and thank you, through you, Mayor. Perhaps a question to our Planning Director. It seems to me that the things that you bring before Planning Council have already been scrutinized, and your Planning Department has made the decision that those that are not worthy of council decision don't come to council. In other words, you reject them and tell our constituents, no, this isn't going to pass, instead of bringing it to council for a decision. Am I correct in that assumption?
Through the mayor, thank you, to Counselor Bocheck. So, planning staff certainly cannot deny a prospective applicant from making an application, whether planning staff see merit in that application or not. What does happen, though, is there is a lot of discussion, whether it's at the formal, through the formal pre-con, pre-application consultation process, or through informal discussions, meetings, emails, et cetera, between prospective applicants and staff. Those discussions do result in the filtering out, I would describe it, of a lot of poor applications or applications that are likely to fail. So certainly what council and committees of adjustment will see is, is applications coming forward, usually that already have a level of merit, because the bad ones are filtered out through the, through the discussion. Again, we cannot deny the applicant an opportunity. Occasionally, applicants do choose to proceed with an application anyways, despite preliminary advice, but that preliminary advice certainly doesn't represent the fulsome review of an application, it does not represent the public process, and it does not represent council or committee's consideration of an application, and sometimes applicants, despite preliminary advice, do choose to pay for that fulsome process and proceed. But, yeah, so, long story short, what does end up before the council or Committee of Adjustment table has usually been screened in some way before it got there?
Thank you, Mark. So, further to Counselor Cooper's comments, we only hear the positive side of any planning matter that's brought before us, and as Counselor Cooper said, if it's taken to the O.L.T., generally, they will rule in favor of, of the Planning Department, because they have all the knowledge and planning, and council sometimes does not. So my question is, if, if an application has merit, and obviously, you bring it forward looking for a positive outcome, if ninety percent of what you're looking at is something you're looking to approve, but ten percent of it is something that is kind of on the fence, would it be advantageous to us to hear both sides? We seem to only hear the one side, and we don't, we don't hear the things that, well, maybe this, or maybe that, and we're close to making a decision on that, but we're not sure. And I'm going to ask Counselor Cooper if, if that is the, the train of thought that he was going down as, as well. Thank you.
Sorry. Fun trying to get to my speaker. Sort of, I, I think, I'd like to hear the pros and cons, and there, there've got to be some pros on the side of approval, but there might be some pros on the side of cons, and one of the ways to get to that is that I think it's very important for us to have our planning staff hear what the public has to say, what the neighbors have to say, what the cottage associations have to say, what our council has to say about an application before a recommendation is made, because maybe there's some considerations that are not necessarily considered by planning staff, because in some cases, let's talk about our counselors, maybe we know more about certain aspects of our areas that may not be at available to our planning staff. So that's sort of what my thinking is, it's sort of, when this recommendation comes forward, and frankly, if you think about it, it's a bit, if you think of a court of law, it's a bit like somebody coming along and saying to the judge, or to the jury, here's your decision. And I, I find that unfortunate, you know, that there's sort of this recommendation, you should decide this way, Mr. Judge, or, or, or any of the body, any of the part of the body that is making a decision, and I think we're, we've got to be careful about having a little more balanced approach to considering these applications. And, and as I said, if it's always going to be approved because it's gone through the pre-consultation process, then, and we're going to lose it, the O.L.T., why have us even consider it?
Thank you, Peter, and I'd like to hear the comments of our Planning Department in relation to what you just said, if that's okay, since we're in Committee of the Whole.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, through the mayor. So certainly, the notification and consultation process does occur, and staff reports are not finalized until that input's received, surrounding landowners, cottage associations, members of council, et cetera, all circulated and have the opportunity to comment, and as we know, we also have the public join us in this, in this chamber to provide comments. And it's certainly a little more compressed when it comes to the Committee of Adjustment, because that Committee of Adjustment, it's a hearing, it's not a public meeting, so when, when people attend a Committee of Adjustment meeting to voice their comments, they're voicing their comments in a context where there is already a recommendation report before the committee, and the Committee of Adjustment considers those comments and certainly can weigh those in, in the decision they ultimately make. However, with Planning Council, the vast majority of, of applications come forward first to Planning Council as a public meeting with no recommendation report, and then it's usually in the next cycle, a month later, when all comments received have been considered, that the recommendation is, is formulated and presented to council. Staff certainly do provide recommendations in staff reports, and we also provide options in staff reports where a committee can refuse or defer an application. I think what I'm hearing perhaps from Counselor Cooper is maybe further detail or elaboration on those other options of, for example, if a staff recommendation is to approve, but options include deferral or refusal, perhaps Counselor Cooper is seeking staff to provide a little more context for those other options to defer or refuse, maybe that would assist. But staff do have an obligation to provide advice and recommendations when bringing forward planning applications to the decision-making bodies, and again, the decision-making rests with those bodies. Staff do not have decision-making authority on official plan amendments, zoning bylaw amendments, minor variances, consents, and then, of course, the O.L.T., Ontario Land Tribunal, when matters do get before the tribunal, it is a hearing, it's evidence, it's tested, there's evidence in chief, it's cross-examined, and ultimately, the hearing officer makes a decision, and that decision of the hearing officer doesn't necessarily always align with the planning staff's recommendation, and we've seen that before, too.
Thank you. Counselor Bradko.
Thank you, and through you, Chair. So I guess my comments on this would be that, I'm having sat on the Committee of Adjustment for the last few years, there are a number of files, and I don't want to put a percentage on it, but there are a number of files that the public discourse is valuable, and that the, the committee makes recommendations to the planning staff and to the applicant to make modifications to what is on the resolution. So we've, we've have a few instances where we have added additional naturalization conditions, or similar modifications to the plans on the spot in the meeting, which I think helps reinforce what the township's objectives are in terms of protecting the environment and ensuring that development is in line with what our strategic and official plan has to say. So I, I do think it's an important, visible stop for our residents in the community, that there is that group that is vetting the decision, so I, I do understand that a lot of times we do feel like we're rubber stamping, but there is a lot of discussion that goes on, and there are modifications that come out of that meeting. So I would, I would not feel comfortable losing that, even though it may seem like an extra piece of effort, I think all of that public consultation and feedback is important, and I do think the residents, if we didn't have it, would feel that we were not holding up our, it's not a fiduciary trust, but it's, it's a, an obligation to protect the interests of the citizens of the township, so I think it is good oversight. I think that O.L.T. in its reinterpretation of what the reports and the Committee of Adjustments and Planning Council have done is not in line with what we would expect in terms of what our planning objectives are, but I think we are providing a necessary function to the community by having these committees. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Jarvis.
Yeah, I'll, I'll agree with Counselor Bradko's comments just there, particularly with regards to the public, public input and the perception, real or otherwise, that they are actually participating in the process, and I think that involvement is critical to, to our council's activities. Having said that, I move on back to comments made with regards to recommendations from planning staff when it comes to the O.L.T. We've got more than enough evidence showing that the O.L.T. has, on many occasions, maybe not all, but on many occasions, looked at the reports, pointed to the recommendation, and said, these guys know what they're talking about, we go with the recommendation. That's been extremely frustrating, I think, for a number of us. That's not a criticism of the Planning Department, that's criticism of the O.L.T. and, and the provincial government, and I'm not sure how we work around that, because I understand that the Planning Department has a role to play. The Planning Department does do a significant amount of screening before any decision with regards to the Planning Council or the Committee of Adjustment comes before us. So it might be helpful to know from the Planning Department, how many applications, both for minor variance or otherwise, come before them, and how many of those end up coming before us, and of those that come before us, how many dramatic changes have been made to them so that they are presentable to us? Now, Derek, that's going to be, to be a little bit too much cumbersome to do, but it could be interesting information, because I, I think there is a perception that everything we get, everything that comes in, goes to the Planning Department, gets a recommendation, comes to either Planning Council or to Committee of Adjustment, and that's not our perception, that's perception from outside the committee, committee chambers. And it'd be nice to see if we could sort of work our way around that somehow. Thanks.
Do you wish to respond to that?
Certainly, thank you, Mr. Mayor. That perception is not an unusual one, and, and it reminded me of a, of a past municipality where I was employed, where a member of the public came to a council and said, he'd looked, you know, at the last five years of minor variance applications, and came to the conclusion that eighty-nine percent of what came before the Committee of Adjustment had been approved, and the Committee of Adjustment was just a rubber stamping body. And, and of course, I go back to the comments I made earlier, you know, and I don't, I didn't dispute the gentleman's numbers, but I pointed out to that council, again, that there's a tremendous amount of proposals, good, bad, or ugly, that come before the Planning Department, and a lot of those are filtered out. So usually, the best of what's proposed is what ultimately ends up coming forward. In answer to one of the questions from Counselor Jarvis, on a daily basis, there's, there's a lot of changes that occur to, and I think he used the example of a minor variance application, often between what is proposed and what ultimately is applied for. Again, notwithstanding that pre-application consultation is no longer mandatory in this province, a lot of applicants, particularly the, the professional designers in the township, do take advantage of that process still, and there's a lot of dialogue, and there's back and forth on site plans and potential site plans and revisions before finally something comes forward in the form of an application form that's submitted with the fee and put into the system.
I, I, I think, if I may, it's important to understand, because I've overheard it at times in the office, I've had numerous residents talk to me about it, is that most of our residents don't know what the zoning bylaw says, don't, they're not planners, they just know that they want to put an addition on the back of their cottage, or they want to build a garage, or what have you. And the first thing to do is they come in and they meet with a planner, and the planner says, yeah, that looks good, but, and the but might be, you've got to be five meters away from the back lot line, and you've only sketched out three meters away. I mean, I'm making up things like this, and I don't know, but I, I'm quite convinced that there's a reasonable percentage of applicants who, once they've talked to the Planning Department, said, well, if I do this, and I do this, and I do that, I don't need a variance. I'm within the zoning bylaw, and therefore, I can get a zoning certificate and a building permit, and we, as council or Committee of Adjustment, will never see it, because they're on side before they, they make themselves on side. I'm well aware of other applications, and sometimes we see them described to us at the committee or council, where people come in and what they proposed included, let me call it half a dozen variances, and they cut it down to two, because they decided to lower the roof so they don't need a height variance, and they've decided to move it a couple of feet forward so they don't need a rear lot variant, et cetera. And I think most residents, when they come into the Planning Department, they're asking for advice, how can I, what's the easiest way to get permission to build what I want to build? And, and I think in most cases, the residents are respecting the advice they're receiving from the planners, and that's why, by the time we see it, it's, it's a, it's a more reasonable ask, whether or not we approve, it's a separate story, but it's a more reasonable ask than what they started with, and I think we have to appreciate and understand that that's what the Planning Department is doing in their pre-consultations and, and in their review, and whether they're dealing with other planners or just the applicant, that that is already taking place. I also think it's very important to note that at Planning Council, in our public meetings, the great majority of time, it's a public meeting to collect information, they collect information from the public, from the applicant, from council members, and a recommendation has not been made. I mean, sometimes we can guess which way the Plan Department's leaning, but their, the instruction we give to the Planning Department is, take all this you've heard today into account and come back with a recommendation. I also think it's very important that, I mean, I, I feel like I'm, I'm sitting here with a decade's worth of planning experience, based on four years on Committee of Adjustment and six years as a mayor, but nobody except the greatest of fools would hire me as a planning consultant. I'm not a qualified planner. If a resident asks me, what's my opinion, I say, well, I can, I can throw out a guess, but until you talk to a planner, it's just based on my experience, it's not based on education, it's not based on actual knowledge, and I don't want to consider a planning application with what, without knowing what the planners think about that application, and who've been hired to, I'll call it, vet the application and advise on it. And I, further, I think there are times that we have disagreed with the recommendations of our Planning Department, and to me, what that says, more than anything else, we've got to update our policies, because the Planning Department, I mean, and not in all cases, in some cases, it's just the planner who prepared the report, used, looked at it from this angle versus that angle, or weighed this piece of evidence more than that piece of evidence, and council weighed it a little differently, but I think, I think we have to understand that in many cases, if the recommendation is to approve, and council decides not to approve, that's when we got to, that's when we've got to do the debriefs, as we talked about in an earlier point, and that's where we've got to say, okay, is this a failure, a failure of our policy to capture what we believe the intent of our residents is in regard to whatever that planning item is? And, and so to me, that's, that's the most important aspect of, of all this, is if we disagree with the planning recommendation, we should try to understand what it was that made the planners recommend something that us, in our less qualified from a planning perspective, but perhaps more qualified from a resident perspective, think was a failure, was a failure in, in, in our policy, we failed to capture some value or measure or something. That's my take so far. Counselor Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'll just be very brief, because I see Counselor Hazelton wants to weigh in, but just a couple of comments. I think we need to remember that the Municipal Act states that the Committee of Adjustment and Planning Council must consider applications from many perspectives. That's what those bodies are trying to do, is look at it not just from a planning That's what those bodies are trying to do, is look at it not just from a planning, a pure planning perspective, but also financial aspects, community interests, um common sense. And I say common sense because recently, we got a recommendation to approve a cottage being built in Cognizant Lake at the high watermark, and that the basement would, in high water years, would be flooded and frozen out, and you name it, so. But it, it was recommended. And where was the sort of consideration of that information? It wasn't there. And so we need to learn from that, and that's why I've, that's, that's just one of, a number of applications that I bring out, and I'm not gonna list them all because I, it's not, I don't want to, to cause a lot of angst here. I'm just simply pointing out that we as council and committee of adjustment have the opportunity to look at things more than just from a pure planning perspective, and especially financial, but other common sense aspects like building at the high watermark is crazy. So um anyway, those are my comments about what, what's been, being discussed. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Hazelton.
Yeah, so our, our conversation is morphed away from the uh, the wording of um this uh point here, changes in process and legal interpretations. Um I'm not suggesting it's bad conversation, I'm just saying we've warped away from it a little bit. Um so if I could just pull it back a little bit, we've got um, uh the focus was on uh changes in process and legal interpretations. And um I, I don't have any specific examples of change of process uh that uh highlight what I think this uh, this section is about. But I will offer um a comment here. Um as everybody knows, we've gone through a lot of planners over the last couple of uh terms of council. And I would say that our current team led by Derek are uh head and shoulders above everybody else. Um but there's always these lingering what if or what about, and you know, are we really still on the right track? And so I'm gonna highlight a couple of things here. Um there are, there were examples of um decisions that were uh brought forward prior to Derek and the team, uh where we were told, well, this is uh, you know, a committee of adjustment forty-five-one or forty-five-two, whatever the right terminology is section, of those sections, and we have to look at it this way, and we have to look at it that way. And uh there were uh planning legal experts who provided um challenging comments to us as to, well, why, why are your staff thinking that way, or why are your staff thinking this way? And one of the conclusions we ultimately came to was, uh we have excellent planners. We have no planning lawyers. And so when it comes to uh legal interpretations of some of these things, there is a strong desire to ensure that we are not only following planning guidance, but also legal guidance on those planning matters. And um I know we have some training coming up in uh September on uh section forty-five, one and two, and how to interpret those things. Um and I'm certainly uh hoping and expecting that we have alignment with what uh planning lawyers would say on those topics as we get that training. But that, I think that's where some of the background on this particular point, where it came from, it was examples of those things that we've had uh in our township. Um we've already heard uh that um uh there is, I would say consensus, that there are needed changes in our O P and zoning bylaws. Uh in fact, if I may, um I had a meeting with uh CEO Mariotti recently, and he said that he believed that the planning department actually had a list of O P and zoning bylaw changes that uh should be considered to get us better aligned going forward, but we hadn't uh made those changes. And I think that socializing those lists uh with council would be very helpful. Um I'm a little concerned that um uh I've not heard that we are marching forward at mock pace on O P and zoning bylaw um modi- um, sorry, and on the um changes to the review of the O P and zoning bylaws, that, that seems to be a sliding uh starting point. Um we were, I think we were all hoping it was gonna start at the beginning of the year, but here we are in August and we don't, we haven't heard anything suggesting it started. So I think that uh we may be needing to uh get the list that uh the planning department has uh apparently, and uh certainly uh there are people in the community that have a list, and perhaps we should be looking at uh doing things expeditiously and not waiting for an O P change uh to ex- to execute on those things. But um a- as I say, the, the, we've, we've morphed in this conversation a little bit. Um I would agree with uh the other comments that I've heard, that we have um perceptions of rubber stamp processes by uh the committee of adjustment, because if planning believe that they always need to bring forth a recommendation, um then how can we possibly benefit as a community, as a township, from community input that takes place at a committee of adjustment meeting? Um and uh, and craft the recommendation from our planning department with that additional input. So, uh you know, when it comes to a process, I think that that is, is perhaps a key e- element of the process that we need to revisit. And maybe there, maybe there is an opportunity to do that, I don't know. But I, I think that every, everybody that I've spoken to um related to the committee of adjustment, they all believe that the value of what is discussed at the committee of adjustment should be visible before a planning recommendation comes forward. And that doesn't appear to be the case. Um certainly, we're, we're seeing more and more of that at the uh planning council stage, so I think that's excellent. So I'll just pause there. Thank you.
I, I can't help but respond. Councillor Hazelton, I don't think this is the first time this council has drifted in their conversation from the topic at hand. But having said that, um any other comments on this uh topic? Councillor Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor, and um I, I would like to say that it would be helpful if we had our planning staff come back and address some of the questions that have been raised here. I don't want them to spend massive amounts of time on it, but you know, I hear things like from a few of you that uh it's really all our problems with our official plan or zoning bylaws. That may be true for the overall official plan and zoning bylaws for the, for the township, but when I speak to planners and planning lawyers about some of the um uh community plans that we have up the coast, that we have three of them, um most uh comments are that uh we've got pretty tight stuff and it's pretty well-defined, and the wordings are pretty good. And yes, we can always make them better, but uh I, I do agree that there's some real slack in some other, not just community plans, but uh some real problems with uh our overall official plan and zoning bylaws, and that does need work. But uh we need to remember that uh there's a hell of a lot of work that went into those community plans and, and a lot of very strong, not just planning advice, but legal advice. And uh let, let's remember that. So, while, having said all that, uh I would be interested in having uh our director of planning, Derek, come forward with some thoughts in terms of how we can maybe better serve our community financially and otherwise with respect to recommendations and how um how we can avoid supporting things like building a cottage at the high watermark. Uh that was a recommendation from our planning staff, and it didn't make sense, so.
How recent was that recommendation? Because I, I, I'm not recalling it, that's.
I'm not gonna name the, the, the application.
No, I'm just.
Cognizant Lake about a few months ago.
How many? No, it's more than a couple of months ago, it's last year then.
Okay.
Okay, last, well, woo.
Maybe two years back, Peter.
Pardon me?
May have been two years ago.
Regardless, it's, it's recent history, it's not, it's not.
That's what I want, that's what I just wanted to confirm, that it was recent history. Thank you.
Do you remember the one now?
Not off the top of my head, but I can certainly find out.
Start sort of be.
Maybe it makes some sense to have uh that as part of uh what comes back from uh our director of planning, a, a review of, it, it's a, it's a sort of a case study that maybe needs to be looked at. That's all. Thank you.
CEO Mariotti.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Kutsia. I, I think these uh, what councillor Cooper is asking can be, can be easily captured during the debrief sessions, that's been discussed at uh, I think it's the, the first item on the process improvements, so. I, I think it can be captured there.
May, maybe Director Whitlib, it's try, time to organize another debrief.
Since we're talking about the debrief, uh does it make sense to uh help us understand it was only apparently if a few people involved uh with that point? But uh I think I heard that there was going to be multiple debrief sessions with various councillors on various topics. Can somebody confirm that?
I, I, I'm looking at staff to have one or another confirm their understanding.
I can, I can, I can start and then uh maybe uh Director Whitlib can, can chime in because uh we only have one director of planning. We don't have uh fifteen of them. Um the O P and zoning bylaw um update i- is definitely front and center. Uh unfortunately, as council is aware, we've had many O L T challenges. Um going back to councillor, uh councillor Hazelton's point about planning staff having made a list of, of uh a hit list, if you like, of items that we want to uh have looked at during the O P and zoning bylaw. Some of those items on that list were captured under the um update, the housekeeping update for the zoning bylaws. Um and some of the more complex ones on the list, obviously, they, they, they have to wait until we actually do the O P and zoning bylaw rev- you know, the formal review. But even the housekeeping amendment bylaw has been challenged and we're going to the O L T. So unfortunately, Director Whitlib is, has no, no choice but to focus his efforts on dealing with um half a dozen or so O L T matters that, that we have be- before us. If council really wants to expedite the process of an O P and zoning bylaw review, then we'd, we'd have to look at hiring uh either staff on a contract basis or hiring a consulting firm sooner rather than later, which obviously is, is more, is more money. But from, from what I gather, you know, eighty, ninety percent of, of um, of what we have right now is uh, is working, that, that there are some some gray areas that need to be tightened up, but we, the resources that we have are the resources that we um, that we have. Now, in terms of debriefs, if we're starting to go down, having to do multiple debriefs uh with all different councillors, this is where we start getting um, you know, we, we're starting to get into the weeds here. And so this is where we need to remember that, you know, council governs and staff manages.
Director Whitlib.
Thank you. Through the mayor, um so two, two quick items that, that may assist. Um firstly, staff are preparing a report to come forward with a list of topics for consideration as part of the official plan review, um bringing it forward to council um for discussion um to help staff, um guide staff to ensure that we've captured all the subject areas that council wants considered um through the official plan review, and that's guidance that count, that staff will be seeking from council before we start to prepare an R F P to seek a consultant to make sure we've, we've captured um everything. Um in terms of the debriefs and the process improvements, um I'm hearing and, and I am aware of which application um some members of council are referring to in terms of a recent O L T decision. So if that's certainly um, that sounds like a priority item, like that members, um some members wish to discuss. So certainly staff can bring that forward as the first debrief item, if that's at top of mind.
Thank you. Excuse me. Um councillor Bocheck.
And thank you, and through you, Mayor, um to our director of planning. Um I'm a little bit confused on what was brought forward by the minister um about a month ago, and it basically said that if it's, if it's on, if it, if it doesn't comply with the province, then the province supersedes the planning law of municipalities. And so when we're doing an official plan review, a lot of our policies within there don't comply with the province, so they really become useless in an O L T. And I might suggest that even furthermore, that the community plans, which are asked to be introduced as as part of the planning process, perhaps those do not comply with the province's uh over-governing documents, and they were very specific in what I heard, that the province rules when it comes to um planning matters and the individual local municipalities uh have to comply to that. Could you, because before we go through with an official plan review, I think council should understand um really what's been, been said to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Through the mayor, um just to clarify, is that, what I saw about a month ago from the province, and we may be talking about um the same thing, councillor Bocheck, is um I saw a, a letter from the province clarifying uh matters related to the Ontario Building Code. Um and that said that municipalities cannot be um the more restrictive or, or make up their own rules, or, or have their own regulations for things like um green building um in um elements and make them mandatory. The, the Ontario Building Code um reigns supreme. It does allow municipalities to have those sorts of um provisions and encourage people to do it, but that, that's what I saw, it was specific to the Ontario Building Code, and I, and I may be mistaken um um in that respect.
Um perhaps my interpretation of that was wrong, and um I'll seek more clarity. Um I certainly don't want you to spend any time on this, if it's a building department um responsibility, uh I thought it included planning too, because the two are relatively connected. And sometimes our building department has to come to our planning department and say, is this allowed? Does it meet the setbacks? Does it do this? And so the two are together uh in one sense or another, and I took it as as being that it would be both departments involved in this uh minister's ruling. Maybe comment on that if you could.
Um yeah, I could certainly circle back on that and, and sorry, through the mayor, uh to councillor Bocheck. And, and the other comment I, I wanted um to make is, in terms of the township's current official plan, certainly um with ever-changing um planning policies and legislation, there's always a, a need to, we're always playing catch-up in terms of maintaining the conformity of our planning documents with provincial uh policies and the Planning Act. Um there isn't too much that I see in our official plan that conflicts with provincial policies. There are items we do need to bring into our official plan, for example, um we need better policies, both in our official plan and regulations in our zoning bylaw to deal with um provincial regulations and uh Planning Act changes pertaining to accessory dwelling units, so second, third, you know, units on a property, so. Um those are things that we need to catch up on, but I wouldn't say that there's too much that in any se- I'm not aware of anything that any significant, in any significant way in our official plan um contravenes provincial um requirements at this point. So we're relatively in good shape, but again, we're overdue for, for an update for sure.
Thank you. Um any further comments on this particular topic? All right, I'm seeing none. And I don't know if we need any sort of motion with this, or we just, it's been discussed? And shall we go on to the next item?
Well, I, if I could, I think the be it resolved clause is a little stronger than what you just summarized there, Mayor, so. Uh perhaps we could focus on that be it resolved clause and uh decide if that by itself is suitable, or if we need to modify it. decide if that by itself is suitable or if we need to modify it. I mean, I think that clause does a pretty good job of summarizing what Counselor Cooper did on his introduction.
I'd be happy if we pass this, but I, I'd like to hear what others have to say, but I'd support it.
What I, what I'm seeing is under, under point seven, I see three paragraphs. The first and the third start with be it resolved. And the, and the middle one, I think is not part of the motion. I'm presuming that the motion, the first paragraph reads be it resolved that whenever staff want to introduce a major departure in process or a major change in the legal interpretation of an act or bylaw of the district or provincial government or of case law, council must be advised first and must give consent for the change. All right. Moved by Counselor Cooper, second by Counselor Hazelton. All those in favor? One, two, three. I got more than enough hands. That is carried. Second paragraph that has be a result is moved by Counselor Cooper, sent by Counselor Hazelton. Be it resolved that whenever possible staff, including planning staff, suggests several options to allow council to choose whichever one serves the township residents best. Staff are welcome to have their own opinions, but must acknowledge that there may be other considerations made by planning council or the Committee of Adjustment beyond a planning, excuse me. I apologize, beyond a planning opinion. So basically I can paraphrase that says that options should be provided. Counselor Jarvis.
Yeah, I, I want to go back to our Director of Planning and, and ask if that is how the, I guess the Planning Act and the province feel about that, that possibility of us working with that recommendation.
Sorry, I heard two motions there. So which?
The, the first one's history. And that, that's if there's a major departure, council's got to know from a major change to policy. The second one is whenever possible, planning staff should offer several options to council or Committee of Adjustment.
Through the mayor. So, so I think on the first one, and, and I certainly agree, and I, I think moving forward, now that the planning department is in a better position in terms of, you know, process improvements and catching up on the backlog, we're in a better position when changes in, in provincial policy or, or legislation, or if there's, you know, legal decisions or interpretations that may affect how we consider certain things. We're in a better position now to bring information reports to council, explaining what's going on. If there's a comment period, whether it's a comment period to the province or to the, to the district, if there's a district official plan policy, such as we heard, you know, from the district recently, there are going to be changes coming forward on integrated watershed management, for example. Staff, I think council can expect to see that staff will be bringing forward reports and affording council an opportunity to weigh in and give guidance on those matters. So we'll see more of that.
And so the, so that's the, the first one that we've already passed. And so the second one was giving options and you, you're, you're agreeable to that.
Yeah. And I, I think I, I said that earlier. I'm hearing that, you know, certainly the staff reports focus a lot on the recommendation and the reasons for the recommendation. And then the staff reports to date always say, by the way, council, you can also defer or, or deny, et cetera. And I'm, and I'm what I'm hearing from this discussion is that council may wish to see more meat on the bones of those other two options for staff to provide a little more information on that deferral or denial. Staff will continue to provide a recommendation or a preferred option, even when options are, are presented. But certainly we can provide a little more explanation or, or information to help council better consider all the options that are presented to them.
Thank you. Counselor Bocheck.
Yes, and thank you for recognizing me, Mr. Mayor. My question is for the clerk and it's a procedural question. We are in the Committee of the Whole right now and we're putting resolutions forward in the Committee of the Whole. As, as in every time I've ever seen this happen, then they come to council for ratification and approval. Is that what will happen in this case here?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you.
It'll be part, I imagine it'll be part of our consent agenda next month.
Yes, thank you.
All right. So I'm going to go back, Counselor Jarvis. That's who I'm going back to.
Thank you very much. I'm just sorry, I just, actual comments made by our Director of Planning right now. One of the options that tends to come forward within those recommendations, planning council, I've seen recently are if we deny it, then it goes to the, it's likely to go to the OLT. And, and that I know is not meant to be a threat, but it is significantly an obvious comment within the, the, the comments made by the planning department when it comes to the options that are available to us. What they're stating is, this is where I'm saying, how does this all reflect with regards to provincial policy? If the option to deny is there, the, the option to deny is there with the, you know, the follow up that it's likely to go to the OLT. I, I don't consider that a particularly attractive or viable option. And I'm just wondering how, how we can work around that. And maybe that's something we can sit down, planning department and work in more depth. But if, if, if the options are there and we go one, two, three, defer, deny, approve and deny carries with it the obvious connotation that it's going to the OLT or very likely to. I mean, it doesn't leave us too many options. That's all I'm getting at.
Counselor Hazelton.
I got a question for our Director of Planning. So is it possible when you prepare a report for you to, rather than specifically making a recommendation, you might have option one, option two, option three. And I think we could generally assume that option one might be your preferred option, but without coming forward and actually stating a recommendation, providing three options and not, and not an implicit, sorry, not an explicit recommendation, but an implicit recommendation by sequence of options. Can you do that?
Through the mayor. I would say it depends on the subject matter of the staff report. If you're, if, and I think what we're talking about here is specifically planning application, staff reports and recommendations. The answer to that, no, it would not be an option for staff not to provide a recommenda, a recommendation or a preferred option among the options provided in the staff report. Planning staff have both professional obligations as registered professional planners and there are responsibilities that go with that designation. And we also have obligations that are spelled out in the municipal act to provide advice and recommendations to council.
But I'm, I'm going to challenge you a little on that. And that is, and, and we heard it yesterday in planning council at one point as part of Mr. Krackey's presentation. And it's certainly been on my mind with a couple of other recommendations that I have read. And this is not in most cases, this is in some cases, but in, in that staff are weighing different bits of evidence. And, you know, I heard Mr. Krackey yesterday say, well, and there's this, and I've forgotten the exact thing, but there's this, but I, I did not give it much weight in my considerations. And to me, that's where, and, and, and I'm, I'm thinking, and I, and I'm thinking of a particular application in the past, and I don't want to be so specific that you don't know which one it is. But some points you, you feel like staff have have some evidence that would suggest this recommendation and maybe more evidence that would suggest that recommendation. So they make that recommendation. But you, I would think, I would hope that in things like that, they might say, if council believes that this evidence is more important, then recommendation to, option two would be more appropriate than option one. You, you know what I mean?
Through the mayor and thank you for that. I, I think that's a, a perfect example of where staff, when providing options on, on a planning recommendation can again sort of put more meat on the bones of, of the other options. Again, I do go back to staff will almost in all cases still identify a preferred option or recommended option from staff, but give council more information to be in a better position to weigh all the options that are available to them.
I, I'm thinking of a particular example that never came in front of council and, and, and so it may be a perfect one, but where certain historic decisions, you could give that historic decision full weight and say then therefore the obvious conclusion is X. But you could also argue that historic decision in your opinion may not have been fully informed or some of the information may have changed. And if you believe that that change is valuable, then option Y makes sense. And both of them have planning logic behind them. And, but it allows council to say, well, actually I think history is more important or the change is more important.
Through the mayor, thank you. And, and I think that supports an, an observation that I heard one of the members of council make, make today that planning staff make recommendations based in the context of the planning policies and legislation. So provincial policies, the Planning Act, district policies, other relevant legislation that comes into play, and of course, our own official plan and zoning bylaw. So that is a narrower scope, but that's the scope in which planning staff are obligated to make those recommendations. That's the, the scope of our analysis. Council is obviously making decisions that council believes are in the public interest. And that affords council the ability to bring into consideration a broader range of factors, right? And, and we see that all the time. And the, the OLT in terms of their decision-making authority is somewhere in the mushy middle of that. Because they're definitely focused on policies and legislation, all in effect, and much of the evidence that's presented before the OLT is always planning evidence from both sides. However, the OLT is also obligated to consider the decision of council and the reasons for it. And they, and that's, that's a change that came about several years ago. But that's also present. And that's why, you know, we even saw that yesterday in planning council, where Mr. Krackey suggested that council attach some reasons to, to one of their decisions, right? Because that's helpful down the road, especially if you want, you know, something, if it ends up at the OLT, if you want the OLT to fully understand or consider council's position. So all good suggestions, and I think we can find a way to work this into the process.
Thank you. Counselor Hazelton.
So thank you for that. I I want to, I'm going to steal Counselor Cooper's thunder because I'm pretty sure I know what he's going to say here. Gives me great delight to ask. Could you explain, Director Whitlib, how it was that several years ago, our planning department believed that there was no need for recommendations, only information? And because of that, we ended up with far fewer challenges to the, at the OLT and far fewer losses and far fewer legal expenses. So I, I hear what you're saying about you, you feel there is an obligation to make a recommendation. We know factually in the past that that was not the case. So has the, have the laws changed? And are we now bound by requirements of making recommendations? Or is that an interpretation? And is it possible that a legal planning, a, a, a planning lawyer might have a different opinion? Could you weigh in on that, please?
Certainly through the mayor. So it's not a, it's not a belief or feeling of planning staff that, that is an obligation. And in terms of the legislative reference, it is in, in the municipal act. I, I can't directly speak to the previous planning scenario in the township. Certainly I was not present at that point. However, if the process at that time was for planning staff to give options, but not recommendations, if I'm understanding the discussion correctly, I don't think that that was something that was initiated by planning staff. That, that would be my belief. But again, I wasn't present at the time, but I don't think that was something that would have been a process recommended by a planner.
Thank you.
Counselor Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor. And just on, on that point, there was a period where about three years where we had virtually no OLT problems or, or hearings because the planning staff were directed by council to not make recommendations. That's, that's a fact. That's what happened. I've got the years that it covers and the, even some of the examples that were in that. But regardless of that, I, I will say that what Director Whitlib is proposing, I think, is he was talking about more meat on the bone. And I think if there is more meat on the bone, in other words, if there's, let's say, three different options, defer, deny, whatever, or approve, maybe under approve, it's, the, the meat on the bone is ham. And then over at deny, it's roast beef. And the council chooses to eat a bunch of roast beef. It, it will at least appear, I'm, I'm guessing here, but I'm asking you, Director Whitlib, if that meat was on the bone, I think the OLT would have an option to say, well, you know, planning staff did raise these points and the council decided they liked the roast beef and went with it. So I think there, there might be some strength to having that kind of approach, some reasoning around the different options. And I think the mayor brought this up initially and I thought it's a very good suggestion. So it, it might get us to a better spot. Thank you.
All right. Shall I read the motion again? It's a move by Counselor Cooper, sent by Counselor Hazelton. Be it resolved, whenever possible, staff, including planning staff, suggest several options to allow council to choose whichever one serves the township residents best. Staff are welcome to have their own opinions, but must acknowledge that there may be other considerations made by planning council or Committee of Adjustment beyond a planning opinion. All those in favor? All right. And that is carried. Number eight on our list is training and orientation program.
Mayor, would you, would you like me to jump in here?
Yeah, I'd like you to be the lead. The, the, this is from your list, so I think you should be the lead.
Apparently I wrote some of this. I don't know. So long ago. Yeah. So I, I guess really what I'm hoping to get out of this is that we try and develop an orientation program for, and some training that relates to gaining greater understanding and knowledge of the township of Georgian Bay. We, we even discussed this yesterday in terms of of the complexities that are found in a township like the township of Georgian Bay, where you have so many different types of, of area that you wouldn't necessarily find in a, a field outside of Markham. Some benefit in terms of raising our, all our level, whether it's council or staff through orientation. And, you know, I can give an example of where there could have been orientation and unfortunately some misguided situations. So when we did our, our ward boundary review, we had a consultant that came in who frankly was a CAO, but not really a ward boundary consultant at all. And the staff told him that there were three communities of interest. Three hamlets. That's it. Well, the consultant, I think billed us $35,000 or something, and we had to throw it out and brought in a specialist, Dr. Williams, who who recognized that there were quite a few other communities of interest, not just three hamlets. Thus, we have four wards and the hamlets are in three of those wards. We have one rural sort of ward, so to speak, but waterfront in Ward Two. So there's quite a distinct number of areas as an example. So that was not very good. We didn't have proper sort of material available to the initial consultant. And Dr. Williams went out and developed all this material himself and through the district. And that's how we ended up with our board system that we have today. And I'm just encouraging us to maybe think about having creating a working group or something like that of individuals and maybe some staff, some counselor, some some people from the community, a small working group to develop orientation and training programs as it pertains to gaining greater understanding of what Georgian Bay is all about. That was really the purpose here. And I'm sort of taking it to 10,000 feet, but that's what I'm thinking. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Hazleton.
I want to make a couple of comments here on this item number eight. But I'm going to begin with what may seem like disconnected comment, but I'll come back to it. So we've had a couple of examples recently where I have observed that our bylaw enforcement people have gone off and enforced our bylaws. And in my thinking, after seeing what they've done, I've thought, geez, maybe we didn't craft that bylaw correctly, or maybe we should have provided a little bit more flexibility for in that bylaw so that it could be enforced differently. And by way of example, I want to highlight the the education that I had from Counselor Bocek in yesterday's meeting, where Counselor Bocek was able to talk about what took place on that little dugout area, drenched dredged area channel, which I think, once I heard that, totally changed any opinion that I might have had of what was going on on that property that related to the you know, the violation, if you will. So there's two things going on there. Number one, maybe we need to modify some of these bylaws that say if you do this, you know, you get that, et cetera. But in this case, Counselor Bocek brought huge value to the table that I don't think anybody else really understood. And I think that could and should have changed everyone's perspective on that matter. So when we talk about training and orientation, you know, I'm not suggesting that these are things that we talk with that we consider, you know, sitting in a classroom for five days and getting educated. Some of these things are on the spot, impromptu, if you will, education, where either members of council or members of the community can bring expertise to the table that we need, that we should understand before we make decisions. And so we talk about training and orientation programs. I know, again, stealing Counselor Cooper's thunder here, yeah, he and his political assistant, parliamentary assistant, sorry, actively produce material that would be of great value to the staff at the township and maybe to other counselors to understand the history of the township and things that have been going on. And those would be great training and orientation programs. But I wanted to I think we should complement that with basically on the spot or in the situation, education and orientation, like what Counselor Bocek provided yesterday. I thought that was great. So I think we need to find a way of bringing that expertise in a more structured manner to the township so that we could all benefit from it.
I think one thing I what I liked about the this suggestions were the, you know, that members of the community contribute to the program and things like that. I was quite pleased that members of our senior staff were out at numerous A G M's this summer. Because I think a lot of education took place that way, informal, but also introductions. In other words, there are there are members of our community who got to meet these individuals, who they exchanged email addresses or phone numbers, communication, I'm sure, is continuing in some cases. And I think that has to be very much part of the orientation of senior staff. And I'm very pleased that senior staff have, you know, are doing that. Let me call it informally. Because I think that's very valuable. Because as we all know, there are corners of this of our township that are very different from other corners. And we have a lot in common, but there's a lot that differs. And if you're on a distant island or you're in a downtown urban area, it's there are some things that are definitely different. And the more our staff can get out to these places and meet folks that are from these different corners of our township, I think it very much helps them do their job. And and I think that we have to continue to encourage that interaction. Counselor Bocek.
Thank you. And further to Counsel Hazelton's comments, recently, we had what I consider to be a knowledgeable person in planning, since we're using names, Beth Helpenny, presented our planning department with a very detailed document about the subject that was at hand. In my case, I didn't believe the document to be of much value to my way of thinking, but I think other counselors read it and thought it was of value. So I think input, whether from a council member or a member of the public, has to be taken into consideration. Obviously, council has the ultimate decision to make the decision, whether they agree with it or not. But usually, those thoughts or ideas are not brought through our planning department, but simply given us the option to read it, if we even receive it. So I'm not sure where this would land, but I think some of the opinions of any subject expert should be brought into consideration in the planning report. I'm not going to go further than that because I don't know the the impetus of any of that. But it would certainly be helpful to somebody like me who's not knowledgeable in planning, but have a fairly good lay of the land. I don't know if that even needs a response from our planning department. That's more for information on my side. Thank you.
Counselor Cooper.
Well, I just wanted to say that some pretty, really good comments here. And Mayor, your example of the senior staff going out, you took them out. Thank you very much, I think, for taking our planning senior senior staff, not just our planning staff, but our senior staff to A G M's and so on. That's excellent. And it's an example of what I'm talking about here. There is orientation, in a sense, happening when that goes on. And so all I was trying to do is maybe suggesting not making it so complex that it's going to take a massive amount of time. But I think if we put together a small working group to develop training and orientation, I think it'd be exceedingly helpful because I keep going back to the this place ain't easy to manage. And I think with the some of the things that we can learn out in our communities, it could be very helpful and maybe study some of the some of the advice that we've received. I'm going to give some examples from planning lawyers and and maybe we sit down and go through some of that and see if there's some learnings and and how we can share amongst the rest of council and the rest of staff. So that's all I'm recommending is some sort of resolution that would suggest that we pull together a bit of a working group. So thank you.
Well, our clerk actually drafted up a a motion that I'm going to read to you as perhaps useful and as be be resolved that an orientation program be developed for all members of senior staff and council, and that orientation program include historical development of the township, social values of each community, goals, values and concerns of residents, and diversity of various communities.
I like that.
Okay, moved by Counselor Cooper. Seconded by Counselor Jarvis. All those in favor? Carried. Thank you very much, Clerk Way. All right. Are you inclined to go any further at this point? Number nine is 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 a has been a well discussed topic in the past. And that is about email addresses of our residents.
So Mayor, if you like, I can there's really not a lot to discuss here because we have discussed it before. And I'm really just encouraging that it appears, that's my understanding, that we can gather communication tools like email addresses from our residents and be able to communicate with them that way. I think if we rely just on what are called our sociales, we're going to miss out on a lot of people that don't pay attention to the sociales or go to the township website to get onto those sociales, whatever the case may be. I think a way of communicating, not just with the cottage associations and but but with our ratepayers. Frankly, our customers, as I call them, they pay the bills. So I've just encourage us to figure out a way to get that information. And I'm I, as I understand it, through any sort of inquiries I've made either through Rick O'Connor or for through AMPA that we're allowed to communicate as long as we get permission from the recipient. And maybe we figure out a way to encourage our residents to provide email addresses so we can better communicate. That's all this is about. And I think it's a worthy cause. So my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Hazelton.
So in the world of collecting email addresses, and as Counselor Cooper said, getting permission, there are a myriad of outbound touchpoints that we have with our residents. We have probably in excess of 2,000 residents who buy fire permits. And when you buy a fire permit, you have to include your email address. What we don't have is a little question of is it okay if we occasionally send you important notices from the township? In other words, gaining permission. So the 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 missing link here in all of our communications with with our residents is the little question of is it okay? Would you mind? Can you agree to? And in that process, the, I would say, thousands of touchpoints we have with customers electronically could very quickly evolve into a powerful email address list that has implicit explicit, sorry, explicit permission because we've asked the question. And so there is there is there are opportunities with a very small shift in in the structure of our communications that we currently engage in for us to ask, get permission, collect, and then be in a position where we can directly communicate with our residents. And I'll bear up. I'll spend just a moment here on the importance of all of this. I'm in Newmarket today, came home for the day, found my township tax bill on my desk. And I thought, oh, okay, I guess I better pay it. It's due on the 20th. And I looked inside and there is the the final tax insert update. And I thought, geez, I would like to share that with my family. But do you think I could find the final update on the website? No, it's the previous update. So generally speaking, it appears that our website is a placeholder. Maybe we focus on outbound communications. I don't know. But that would only be through social media and finding things there can be a challenge. So what we really need is an ability not only to gather and collect and directly communicate with our residents, but we also need to focus some time and attention on our website so that people can actually find documents that they would like to find. Quite frankly, the firearms document could not be found on the website anywhere. Thank you, Karen, for sending us the information. But looking for it, it's a challenge.
Sorry, Clerk Way, you had a comment you wanted to make.
If I may worship, just it doesn't solve everything right this second. But the township is in the process of implementing an upgraded website system. Our upgrade won't begin until October because that's where we are in the queue. But that new platform will have a better navigation system to make it easier for people to find things on our website. It will have a better landing page, which is right now, we're kind of stuck to the parameters of our website. So there's only a limited things that we can put on the main page. So we'll have much more flexibility that way moving forward. So things like the gun club, not the gun club, sorry, the that's like a past life. Anyway, sorry, the discharge firearms by law. We could put something like that right on the main page. Additionally, how that website subscription service works to push out emails when we do add things will be changing. So we don't necessarily want to push everyone to update to a new system right now when we'll have a better one coming forward in a few months. But what we can do as well is add when we're at that point, we can add something to the bottom of our signature lines and all of our emails. As I'm sure some of you have noticed, we have varying information that we've been pushing out through that. So when we're at that point, so then every email, every communication that we have with the resident, it'll be right there in their in their face, so to speak, about how they can subscribe. And then we can collect our email addresses and push out information from there.
So I'm delighted to hear that. I'm I'm also a little bit from Missouri in the sense that I've heard great stories and great expectations like this two or three years ago. And I would hope that we are not finding ourselves three years from today in the same state that we're in today.
I think it's great news because I share with you the frustration of going to our website and wanting to find a document. And I type in the name of the document and I get 354 options. And the first couple pages of options aren't the document. And yet I could put the clear title in. And I'm not blaming staff when I say that. I'm blaming an outdated system that clearly wasn't designed for us to look for documents that I think some of our residents would want to find. So I I'm very cheered by the fact that an updated system is coming in in a couple of months. Counselor Bocek.
Thank you. And I want to go back to the original statement by Counselor Cooper. My own personal opinion is I hate being bombarded with unsolicited emails that have nothing to do with me. Trust me, I get a lot of them. So my way of handling this is if there's a subject matter that pertains to a particular ward or a particular section of people that is not a closed session matter, but an open to the public matter, I simply fire that right off to the cottage association that is responsible for their members. I'll give you an example. If there's a specific matter that they're talking about Six Mile Lake, I will send that to Harold and Harold will send it to his 1,400 members. That way, I don't need to collect the emails of all those 1,400 members. And I do that with the Gloucester Pool Association. I do that with a lot of associations because if the subject matter pertains to them and their association feels it's of value to send it out to their membership, then it gets sent out. I personally don't want to hear about things that are happening out in Cognizine that have nothing to do with me whatsoever. And I think by gathering email addresses and sending out
And um I think by gathering email addresses and and sending out um broad spanned emails, a lot of people don't want to get those. The their email boxes are full enough. So the cottage associations can take care of that, and that's the way I do business, and I believe the message is getting out to everyone that needs to get the message. And thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Redco.
Thank you, and through you, Chair. Um, so I I I don't share that same perspective exactly. Um, I think what I was gonna mention is that I know Trish works hard to work on social media posts and she also has email lists with um cottage associations. But I think her work with the cottage associations um and and keeping them informed of different things doesn't necessarily mean that the information that she's providing to the cottage associations is going to anyone other than the contact at the cottage association. Um, and there are some cottage associations that Jennifer doesn't even have, or not Jennifer, Trish doesn't even have on her her list. And you know, case in point, when I was um getting feedback on the uh the bin transition for Twelve Mile Bay Road, um, the sort of the news of the the closure went down the road into the bay and um the uh the president of the Wawa Tesi um cottage association got in touch with me and and they they didn't have any connection to Trish whatsoever. So you know, for for all of the best efforts for Trish to get information to cottage associations, I still don't think what she's doing is getting past that. Um, I think we could ask uh the cottage associations who have email lists of their members if they have um privacy uh policy that would allow them to share their email list with the township and develop a a more broad um base for us to import. Um, and then go forward asking them to for permission for what kind of communications they might like with whatever system the township puts in place for communications. Um, but other otherwise, you know, for we're looking at Facebook, there is still a good part population that ignores Facebook and other social medias. Um, but I do think, you know, we have to keep targeting, getting people to sign up directly. And as long as we have granularity in some of this, that people can sign up for different types of information so they're not getting bombarded with everything. I think that's great. But I I think there's um more opportunities for us to get the cottage associations to be more engaged with the dissemination of information or with the collection of email addresses. So these are two opportunities that I don't know how we resolve, but that's something I I think where we have an opportunity. Thanks.
Uh, Counsel Cooper.
Uh, I'll be very brief. Uh, I say ditto to Counsel Fredco. Uh, his comments are excellent. My main point here is that I I I'm sympathetic to what Counsel Bocheck is talking about, getting bombarded bombarded with information that you don't want. Um, and I think if we get people to sign on, we can also say what would you like to hear about and give them, you know, five or ten options, and they can check off what they're interested in hearing about or not hearing about. So that's one way to deal with that subject, I think. And uh maybe a bit challenging getting email addresses from cottage associations. Many of them would have privacy commitments to their membership. Uh, they they're some some of the associations don't even share a written or printed uh membership list. So there there's a lot of sort of guard rails in place for that, but but I think making sure that we contact all the cottage associations, including Wawa Tesi is very critical and a way of getting information out through them and encouraging a relationship building with the presidents or the communication directors at at those cottage associations is a way to deal with that. So just a few extra comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Jarvis.
Yeah, that Wawa Tesi situation is on me. Um, but to be in my own defense, trying to stay current with the contact people at these associations can be rather difficult at times, and I was in contact with somebody from Wawa Tesi. Of course, the associations change uh every couple of years. Contact people change, and then the contact information isn't passed on from one to the other. There's a real issue. Uh, and I'm getting to a point here. There's an issue with many people in the bay particularly. Uh, say Ward Two and part of Ward Four that really are um remote in many different ways to what goes on in the municipality, and some of that is by desire. Uh, some of it's by ignorance, and some of it's just not knowing the best way to do it. Yeah, when I finally uh and I credit Counsel Fredco for his work on this. When uh uh the contact person with Wawa Tesi and I finally connected, they requested a list of uh communication um devices through the municipality that would be useful to them. So that's been forwarded on and we'll see how that goes. This is coming to a point. And the point being, my understanding is, and it's not uh through anything we've learned, but something that I I understand is in places. We are allowed as a municipality to push out communications at least once to everybody that we have uh email addresses for and our addresses for. And and the people receiving are on the other end have the option to opt out from any further communications. But once you get the first one out to them, they've got the contact they need or not need depending on how they want to look at it. So what's to stop us from getting a a push out uh soon, whenever um so that we can literally lay down a better base of communications with our constituents?
CEO Mariotti.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Cutsey. So everything that we are talking about is happening to some degree. Um, if people wish to subscribe um to Township News, uh there is a sub menu that you can pick what you'd like to be subscribed um subscribe to. And um with the new with the new software system that is that is that is coming down the pipeline uh this fall, it um it will greatly improve the ease of, you know, the kind of the inter user ability into interaction um between the user and and the system. But we we already have those those people who are interested in receiving information. We have their email addresses. We've started to, while we wait for the upgrade to happen, we've started to manually push out to all our subscribers, our monthly newsletter, uh our Council Connect and any other pertinent information. And we've we've also partnered with the library to use their emails, uh email network to also for the library to share uh the news, um township news as well. So we we're doing all this. I I don't understand what kind of additional communication Counselor Cooper wants us to en- engage in if if we can get a sense as to what exactly you want us to get out to the community, then we we can work on adding that information as well to the uh as we push the info out.
I I I I think it's interesting. Um, my take in all this is the more, I'll call it options that are out there for people to use, including the township itself, uh the better in many ways. And I fully appreciate Counsel Bocheck's comment about, you know, the um I'll call it if not junk email, but I mean, I know I get a lot more emails. I'm just looking at a list right now that uh some of which I don't really want. Um, and but because then you have to edit it because if somebody sends you. I mean, I've I've had organizations. I said, you know, you're sending me an email every week. Uh, either you cut it back to a month or I'm just stopping because I don't want that much. The what I find interesting, and this is based on my conversations with people in 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 a few different uh cottage associations. And we have the same challenge that as they do. We have a property owner. So the property owner gets a tax bill. We can certainly put an insert into that tax bill because we have in the past and say, you know, sign up. And the property owner may be granddad who takes great pride in not being capable on most uh devices. Or it could be a granddad is extremely capable. We have the range. But what what most cottage families that I talk to are three generation or or more and can and and it can include up to dozens of people, or it could just be a handful. And one person in that group or two are um interested in being updated, and I think that's our challenge is to find the email address or two on the property where they're actually going to pay some attention or want to hear the news. And I think I I, you know, I encourage us as a township, just like I encourage all cottage associations and the like to, you know, so somehow get out there and, you know, social media is one way of doing it. Um, and and and, you know, and inserts into tax bills is another way and online uh options on the website. I think encouraging people to uh so somehow we reach that one or two individuals in the household, the three generation or more household that says, yeah, I want I want to be in the know. I want to receive that monthly uh uh Council Connect or what whatever it may be. Uh, and and I think, but I I do fully respect the fact that a lot of people I run into they don't want it. They don't care. They're here to get away, and I think we have to all to respect that. Um, I'm gonna go to uh Ms. Nayar and then back to Counsel Jarvis.
Uh, thank you very much, Your Worship. It's it's often easy to pit it on communications that the communications are uh the problem, and there is a lot of moving parts that make or sometimes don't make that document here and there, not make it to a website or a specific uh a specific upload, but I really feel like we're all in this together, and it's important to pass some of the responsibility back on to council when they have a email list and a distribution list that the municipality does not have when it comes to sending out newsletters that are monthly or biannually. We often do not see links in those newsletters that are connecting their residents or constituents back to content that is available on the website via Council Connect and also the Georgian Bay Times. These documents are sometimes twelve, fourteen, sixteen pages in uh content-rich, relevant, monthly information. And it needs to be distributed as best as possible to as many places as possible. We most recently held a movie night in Mac Tier. We did posters, social, the information on the side of the arena, shared it within uh Facebook groups and also community groups, and the attendance was remarkably low. So it's it's a struggle for us to identify that magic formula, but I would say that a piece of the formula needs to be to get those that are public figures and engaged in communications with lake associations or uh through constituent information that this content gets pushed out because it's there, it's available, it does not need to be produced. And if we can share the news, then hopefully that will engage and encourage residents to become a little bit more aware of what's going on.
Thank you. Counsel Jarvis.
Yeah, apropos of the comments I made and actually the comments just made by uh our Director of Sustainability and but um as a response to our CAO's comments, I am very happy to hear that there are efforts being made purely through places like the library, et cetera, to get more communication out. And yeah, I'm I'm uh I I I apropos of your comments, Mr. Mayor, there are people that pride themselves, and I'm one of them, on not being on social media on a regular basis. I happen to be. I pat myself on the back on a regular basis. Um, I do not need that stuff. Um, it would be for me, it's a hassle, too much stuff coming in as it is. But email, I I have no problem with email. I have no problem with answering the phone. Um, but uh and there are a number of people. I mean, my dad is the one that processes the tax bill and he's ninety seven years old. So yeah, good comment, great observation. So somehow we got to get to these people. The tax bill is one way to do it. Um, updating our website so navigating it is a little bit easier. Um, I mean, when I go in to grab a Council Connect so I can download it and then send it on to a contact up the bay, um, I've got to go, you know, through the count, through the um Council Portal to do that. It's a bit of a, it's a bit of an effort to do it. I've gotten pretty good at it. That's fine, but somebody coming in out of the blue would have presumably some difficulties in doing that. So improving that process will help a lot. It is a tough, this is a tough nut to crack because communications today are not what they used to be. Um, and uh if for good or for bad, because now it's more immediate, which is good. On the other hand, there's so many different options available. It's difficult to pick out the one that works for everybody, and there probably is not one. But uh the best we can do, and I think and I and our CEO, the question still applies. We are allowed to push out communications to our constituents uh to however we get their emails and leaving them the option to unsubscribe it uh I I have as of the first communication. I've got that right, right? Okay, that was my question there. Um, and again, uh library is a good place to go because library is right up to date on what's going on in the society uh as a whole and a good place to uh work things through as well as to our um uh as we uh uh our our group in the uh with the uh sustainability department. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you, Counsel Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor, and uh I just wanted to uh say that uh I thought what uh Counsel Jarvis had to say is is pretty typical of uh how many people, including myself, view some of this. Uh, and uh I I think uh what we need to remember is that uh I think most of our ratepayers, the owners of the properties and so on, uh are able to uh it it work on the internet a little bit, even if it's just receiving emails. Uh, and I that's the whole purpose of this subject today is collecting email addresses. I'm not uh uh CAO Mariotti was asking, am I talking about sending this versus that? That's that's not what I'm suggesting here. I'm simply suggesting that we make a concerted effort uh to get as many email addresses as we possibly can through whatever means we can that is legal and appropriate. And um that that's really what I'm suggesting here, a strong email marketing list. Uh, uh, building a marketing uh list through email would be very good, and it's a way for a tool, a communication tool for us. Um, and it's uh hoping that people will come to us um to sign on is gonna not achieve a great deal, in my view. I think the best way is to get out in front and say, we we'd like to talk to you if you're interested in hearing from us. That was the whole point here. Um, with the getting the email addresses and the tax bill is one way that we should uh for the next five years be sending something with the tax bill saying, here's how you sign on. By the way, I don't know much about technology, including QR codes, but maybe is there a way to use even something as the people are familiar with QR codes? It's could sign on. So uh just a thought. Anyway, there we go. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Hazelton.
So I feel like I'm a bit of a broken record, but I need to say something that relates to.
Stylist, please.
Pick up the stylist. Um, so my comments relate to Ward Four, not to the other wards. Uh, I would say that the other wards uh and the other cottage or associations probably do a pretty good job of communicating with their communities. In Ward Four, we have about eleven hundred properties. We have a Honey Harbor Association that represents maybe two hundred and fifty. Um, we have a ton of road associations. Every little road has a little road association, and they in turn believe that they that's the association they should connect with, and so there are a lot of road associations where those members uh are not part of the Honey Harbor Association, which is the cult known, well-known association in our community. And so the challenge we have in our community is different from the challenge in the other communities. And so sending a note to the association, even though they may have a broadcast list of three hundred, is still less than a third of the members, the landowners in Ward Four. And so my focus is, as Counselor Cooper mentioned a second ago, we need to collect and build. We need to collect and build an email distribution database. This is not something that happens where people come to us and say, well, here's my email. I want you to uh. Uh, I want you to send me this and I want you to send me that. No, that that's not how email lists and email communications outbound email communications work. We have to incent people to give us their email address. So on the occasion, as perhaps the the mayor suggested, maybe once a month, maybe once a quarter. Maybe three times a year on special events where we need to get uh, resident input. We directly email them when they have never asked for an email from us before. But we've collected their email with permission and now we have the right to send things to them. So. I am, as I said, very focused on solving the problem in my ward. I think it's less of a problem in the other wards, but in my word, it's amplified by the characteristics that I've shared. I won't repeat them. Otherwise I'll be cut off by the mayor, but uh, I think you've got my note. Thank you.
You're you're slowly learning. I love this. Sorry, I I couldn't help myself, councillor Hazelton. I I, you know, I I I, there there is a a motion here. We can read it uh, or and pass it. Um, I think in reality, it's already partly being addressed by staff. And and I think we've, we can continue the uh, the encouragement. But I do have moved by councillor Cooper, semi-councillor Hazelton. Be it resolved that council directs staff to create a program for developing a robust email list of residents. And bring back a report to council on how and when this list might be operationalized. All those in favor? All right, um, council. We're approaching eleven. I know that councillor Predko has to exit in half an hour. Uh, I would like to exit in half an hour. I'm wondering if we, having done three. If we might just summarize where we're at now and and say, call it a morning. And I got a thumbs up from councillor Cooper and because he's behind all this, I'm going to take that as a thumbs up for everybody. So. We went through seven, eight and nine and when I look at the um, list, I mean. All right, Cooper and Hazelton. I've just been Cooper and Hazelton each time because they're, among them are enthusiastic for this, so why not? Uh, CEO Mariotti.
Yeah, my apologies, Mayor Kutsia, and and since this is cow. I I I, I'm struggling here and I'm scratching my head uh, as to the resolution that was just passed. Because now we want staff to come back with a report on how we're going to operationalize something that we are already doing. And the list just keeps getting bigger and bigger. So my my, and and maybe we're not, we're not quite syncing as to the the frequencies. That we're communicating between staff and and council. And councillor Hazel's point a little earlier about being ward specific. And I totally understand, you know, each each ward councillor has their own specific. Um, requirements that may not be township wide. And and really is as as a township, staff communicate really on a township level. If there are events. Staff do communicate, hey, you know, Rock the Dock is happening on Friday, you know, for example. But if there is something specific that an individual councillor wishes to convey through his ward. There are alternative avenues which which do occur, you know, amongst amongst some councillors. Is that those individual councillors develop their own email list and can communicate that way. If the intent of council is that we want staff to collect. An email list to then give that email list to individual councillors to communicate, that that is not possible.
And I don't think that was not in the motion. And 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 I think with this particular motion, it was create a email list of residents and bring back a report to council. And how this will be operationalized. And in my mind, given all the work you're doing, the first thing is just simply an update. That report could be an update of where you're at.
Okay, so we could, we could provide a verbal update as part of our monthly update report. Okay.
And and because I think that's important that therefore we understand what's going on. Um, I don't think, I I I don't think it's appropriate for. Staff to create a tool for an individual councillor to use. I think we're talking about township wide here. Even though, you know, obviously some eat, like if we're talking Rock the Dock. As an example you brought, uh, probably a lot of folks in the Mactier corner of our township would be less interested. But, you know, may maybe at some point they might, they might have chosen if they knew to drive up to Mactier for movie night and 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 get dinner. Uh, at the same time, who knows?
Yeah.
Anyway, um, councillor Hazelton?
Sure, I wanted to highlight a couple of things that we've heard from other councillors, uh, where. Uh, councillor Jarvis, for example, highlighted the fact that keeping in touch with various associations was sometimes challenging. When they have a change in personnel and they usually have change in personnel on an annual basis. Um, and we've heard that uh, example from others. Um, we are going to have an election next year. Uh, a councillor who may have a good. Uh, ability to communicate with his uh, area, his ward uh, may disappear and that uh, ability to communicate disappears. This should be a township opportunity to understand who the people are in the township. And be able to communicate with them. Uh, and that is what this resolution is and was. And I think we want to make sure that we clearly understand that. The the concept of having people uh, go out of their way to come to our township and sign up for things, that's a fail. We did an analysis uh, a year ago um, on the planning committee. And we concluded that there was about a five percent coverage, uh, both combination of social media and email. So the the coverage of our township has a lot of opportunity to improve. And that's what this resolution was all about. Thank you.
All right. So. Clerk Way was kind enough to provide us a a listing. Of the uh, where where we are at with regards to this whole thing. And on that listing, item one, process, process, uh, process improvements through debriefs. Um, I can tell you that. Uh, Kutsia, Cooper, Jarvis and Whitlib did have an initial meeting. I'm looking forward to follow up meetings with regards to debriefs. I think we've gathered some more information today on some things that could be included there. Um, and I I do think that in the future, depending upon the topic, the the councillors involved may will will vary. Um, obviously, if you get more than three councillors in a meeting, it's now a meeting of council and then that's not a debrief. That becomes a council meeting. Um, item two, a goal setting for each term of council. Uh, we did do, uh. CEO Mariotti and I did do one on ones with uh, six uh, council members, uh, well, sorry, with five council members. Um, and there are some follow ups that will come from the the notes that we took on that. Some of it has already been happening. Number three was identification, selection of consultants and experts and we. We we had a motion there about members being, well, we're talking about members encouraging residents to. Request to become on vendor lists, uh, encouraging residents to share their expertise with correspondence and the like. And to um. Input, we're going to provide input on the terms of reference when staff are implementing directions of council. Item four, annual staff work plans and members or members encourage staff. To provide more communication between council when they're preparing their senior management work plans. And number five, gaining better understanding of the roles we play has not been discussed. Today we did, and item six was codes of conduct and that the clerk is working on that. Item seven, we discussed today. Item eight, we discussed today. Item nine, we discussed today. And so and so items ten, eleven and twelve remain as nothing has been done to date. Councillor Bocek.
Um, thank you. I'd like to refer to item, I believe it was number three. I don't have it up in front of me here. Um, perhaps I could get it or you could reread it to me.
That was, item three was identification and selection of consultants and experts.
Yes, um. Relating to that, uh, yesterday, we had a gentleman in here who was ordered to seek. Professional advice um, about grading and his specific question was. Does the township have somebody who they consider to be an expert in that field? And I'm just wondering if this item number three is. Um, addressing that concern or am I reading item number three wrong?
I I think item three, my my interpretation interpretation of item number three was that we want to encourage people. In the township who have expertise, like our residents, for instance, to share that expertise with us. Um, in the in the case yesterday, to the best of my knowledge and staff can correct me. We don't want to, we don't like to recommend people to residents. Um, we 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 can recommend a called qualifications they should look for. And and I think yesterday we said, we, he should come in, he should find somebody who is can can confirm his drainage design. Like that was one of the biggest concerns and and uh, and so, you know. And I know he's talked to staff since about that to confirm what what uh, what what they believe it was required from our.
Sure, and that's what I was looking for, just um, what number three was.
Yeah.
Actually specific to, and so that's my.
We want to make sure that our residents share their expertise if they're so inclined.
Sure, great, thank you.
Council, the only thing I have left, because nobody's raising their hands, is to adjourn this meeting until our next round. So I have moved by councillor Hazelton, seconded by councillor Predko. Be it resolved that the committee of the whole does now adjourn at eleven oh two AM. To reconvene on September nine, twenty twenty five, or at the call of the chair. All those in favor? We are, uh, whatever we are, we're adjourned.